I wish to call to order this work session of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It is May 31st, and once again, I'll note for the record that Commissioner Jones and I are present in the NatU Hill Room, and Commissioner Thomas is joining us virtually. We're going to switch the order of what's on the agenda because we will be hearing from the Sheriff's Department at 11:30. So let's start with Ms. Krosilius of the Planning Department.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I'm here to present the ordinance 2023-20. This is the Starts Living Trust or Starts Rezone. This is care of Lorraine Fowler. The petition site is located at 7955 South Fairfax Road. This is a request to rezone from the Agricultural Rural Reserve zoning district to the limited business district. The property is 17.29 acres, and it is within the environmental constraints overlay area, Areas 1, 2, and 3. It's in Clear Creek Township. So just a quick rundown of the process so far. So the Plan Review Committee heard this in October, and they forwarded a negative recommendation by a vote of 5 to 0. The Plan Commission heard this in November of 2022 as a preliminary hearing where there was some discussion regarding increased traffic. Petitioner had a waiver final hearing at the Plan Commission, and that motion failed. The petitioner then did utilize their three allowed continuances, and it did not come back for a final hearing until May 16th. So Plan Commission did hear this in May, and they forwarded a negative recommendation by a vote of 5 to 2. So currently, the petition site contains a residential accessory structure. There used to be a log cabin-style residence on the property, but was demolished. So the property was, is owned by a family trust and is advertised by the petitioner, Lorraine Fowler, who is a real estate agent and also a part of that trust. So the petitioner has stated the desire to rezone the property to limited business because they've stated that there have been multiple interested buyers that would like to see this property used generally for boat storage. That is the use they've been seeing in order to allow one of their interested buyers to pursue that use. That use is not permitted in the AgRR zoning district, but is permitted in limited business. So that's their intent for this rezone. So the Agricultural Rural Reserve zoning district is generally intended for agricultural uses, accessory, single-family residential uses, and then very low-density rural, non-farm-related single-family uses. The limited business district, in a very quick summary, is to meet essential business needs and convenience of neighboring residents. So on screen is just the location map to familiarize yourself where it is along South Fairfax. It does have frontage along Lake Monroe. It's very steep slopes, and we'll see in just a site conditions map here in a moment. So it's kind of long and narrow, again, 17 acres. Because of its proximity to the lake, it is in the ECO area and does cover all three zones. So there are steep slopes on the property, and they are protected under Chapter 825 of the ECO area. So the site does have frontage along South Fairfax Road, which is a major collector per the 2016 Thera Fair Plan. There are slopes that exceed 15%. No known cost features. A driveway permit was pursued by the petitioner. It has not necessarily been completed. The existing entrance to the property was informally denied, saying, you know, to pursue getting an approved driveway location, they would need to close down the existing entrance and relocate it. So they've stated, again, informally without the issue of a permit, that there is a location for an approved entrance. It just needs to be relocated. So the petitioner has not actually completed the driveway permit process, but in the future, if they do pursue getting a driveway permit, or if this rezone is approved and they pursue a commercial site plan, it's been informally acknowledged that there is a safe location to access the property. So here is that site conditions map. The property has a good amount of buildable area of slopes under 15% towards the western side of the property. With those steep-protected slopes, the closer you get, farther east. So just to run through a few site photos, the property is adjacent to some pre-existing business zoning districts. As you can see, an RV park to the south, and there's a few properties with businesses that are either pre-existing, non-conforming, adjacent, or another business to the south that's also zoned PB, pre-existing business. So this is at the entrance of the property looking east. As you can see, that older residential structure towards the back. This, because of how long and narrow the property is, this is really just the front kind of utilized grassy hay field right now. This is a, basically the northern property line of the adjacent property's driveway. This, the current entrance is kind of just a well-worn, grassy entrance. This is looking south along the frontage and south along Fairfax. So the comprehensive plan identifies this area as rural residential. The current use of the property is AgRR is consistent with the use. Granted, there's not a defined use right now. It's only a, an accessory structure on the property. The current uses under AgRR are consistent with the rural residential plan, zoning district, comprehensive district. Rural residential does include the rural properties that have environmentally sensitive areas, so it does capture those protected slopes under the ECO area 1, 2, and 3. The proposed request to change it to limited business does clash in some areas where, you know, where it says the average density shall prefer rural lifestyle opportunity of this area and help protect nearby vulnerable lands. That's kind of a toss-up. Those slopes are going to remain protected no matter what zoning district, based on the ECO area 1, 2, and 3. So that's going to, those are going to be protected under Chapter 825, no matter what. There is an interesting statement in here that says open space conserve variety uses, including recreational opportunities. That's been an argument that we've heard through this process by the petitioner. The argument of, you know, the lake being adjacent entrance to boating docks and the need for boat storage. Again, the petitioner throughout this process has stated boat storage specifically, but this zoning dis, the rezone request is going to be limited business, which would include all of the uses under the LB zone, which you can see and compare with the current AgRR permitted uses under Exhibit 4 and 3. I'm sorry, 2 and 3. That has the permitted and conditional use list. So I'm going to jump through the findings of fact, which I've pretty well covered here. We have the petitioner's letters stating, you know, they're a part of the property, and they're interested, they have multiple buyers interested in the property for boat storage. And then, again, Exhibit 2 with these permitted uses, of course, under Agricultural Rural Reserve. We see a lot of fairly intensive agricultural uses that would most likely be permitted by right with some residential, some public and semi-public uses, and very limited business and personal services. When we go down to limited business, we're going to see more outright permitted uses, of course, always pending a commercial site plan review, but we see a variety of those retail and personal and business service uses. Exhibit 4 is just, it just kind of highlights the design standards for the two different zones. And lastly, this petition started with a buyer that was now no longer involved, but there is a new buyer, Mr. Dave Utley, who is very interested in the property. He has provided a letter to the Plan Commission, which is now under Exhibit 5. And I expect that they'll probably, the petitioner, Lorraine Fowler, and also Dave Utley may be speaking together when you hear this for a final hearing. That is really all I have. Does any of the Commissioners have questions?
Commissioner Thomas, any questions?
No questions. We've, we've heard this. There is some concern about the, the changing interest of the owner that, that we heard at the last Plan Commission meeting. So that concern still sits with me, and, and also the, the range of potential uses that LB would provide. So those are just my initial thoughts. Thank you.
Commissioner Jones.
Yeah, I would also be a little concerned about all the uses that would become possible with that change.
So I, I do have some questions, and I apologize I haven't been able to read through this because we don't get these in advance, really, the way we do our regular packets. So with a rezone, would the owner be required to put in a new driveway, or could they stick with what is there?
Whether, with a rezone, they would need an approved commercial site plan, and they would be required to have an approved permit from the Highway Department. So it would be required that they need that.
What's, what's the width of the frontage on Fairfax, do you know?
It is 270 feet. So it does meet the design, design standard requirement of the AgRR district of 200 feet.
Okay. And you noted that there was a good bit of slope as, as the property goes down to Lake Monroe. Are they planning to use this as a direct access to the lake, or would just the part of the property closest to Fairfax Road be used for the boat storage? They're not using this, I guess, I'm crudely saying this, but they're not going to use this as a, as a ramp into the lake, are they?
No, would not, would not be permitted under 825. They have no intent. The, the petitioner and current partial owner, Lorraine Fowler, and the two different interested parties that I've spoken with, they, they've shown no intent to try to access. The type of business that they've always described is kind of enclosed boat storage toward the front, on, only on the buildable area. Yeah, so we would, we would be very against, I'm pretty sure most departments wouldn't, would not be favorable of them attempting to develop in those slopes. It's, they're quite steep, and it's, yes.
I would think it would be concerning because of erosion and degradation of the slope.
Yeah.
So, so you noted that the Plan Commission voted 5 to 2 to forward this. Can you briefly summarize why there was, there were two no votes?
Yeah, so I think there were multiple Plan Commission members that were compelled by the argument of, you know, the petitioner and the interested buyer. They are both experts in their, in their fields. The current interested buyer, Dave Utley, also has, runs boat storage currently, and Lorraine Fowler's been a real estate agent in the county for quite some time. And I, I think there's just a, they were impressed that it's generally a safe location. There's not necessarily a poor access. Fairfax is somewhat curved there, but it's not as curvy as other places on Fairfax, right? So I, I think there were a few people that were impressed that, that the petitioner and the interested buyer, you know, were able to demon, or explain and argue that there is a need for boat storage near, near the lake. Generally, the remonstrance that we saw, there are a few neighbors that are adjacent that came out. They never necessarily argued too much against that idea of the use of boat storage. Again, it's a rezone. We can't just do one use, but their issues were more concerns over safety of the road, speeding. There were concerns about lighting of commercial buildings and being directly across from the property. Not, there is not, there was not necessarily a overwhelming negative response. I think it was a, a very reasonable concern of adjacent neighbors for a property possibly becoming commercial. And Julie, you've been there the whole way, so absolutely, if you think I've missed something out or misconstrued, feel free to add, please.
No, not at all. I think, I think there was a concern about maintaining it as a residential area. That, that was the other thing that was expressed, but you hit upon all the other main points. But thank you.
I have to ask about the, the feedback from people because I didn't notice anything in the packet where, where there were written letters of opposition or support, either one. So, thank you. At this point, are there, is there any other question or concern? So when would we like to have this back? In two weeks? Okay, so...
I'd be fine with that.
All right. So how about Ms. Krosilius, if we see you back here on June the 14th?
That works. Thank you so much, Commissioners.
Thank you. You're always so thorough with this. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, and I believe Ms. Purdy has something to add to our agenda.
Yes, thank you. I'm requesting your approval of the 2023-24 Juvenile Detention Alternatives Initiative Grant. You frequently will hear that as JDAI, that the juvenile probation department has been receiving for the past few years. And this just came through yesterday late in the afternoon, and as you are going to be out or not available next week. I spoke with Ms. Brady, the Chief Probation Officer, and she asked if we could go ahead and get this in front of you today. This is not a new grant. This is one that they've had, and it's for the sum of $70,000. The, the assignment of the dollars is specific. It's already in the grant. $15,000 is for coordination, and $55,000 is specific to programming. And just to kind of give a little background on the JDAI initiative, this is actually the Annie E. Casey's Foundation's Juvenile Detention Alternatives Initiative, and it's a bipartisan movement for juvenile justice reinvestment. The initiative involves the reallocation of government resources away from mass incarceration and toward investment in our youth, families, and communities. For over 20 years, the Annie E. Casey Foundation's Juvenile Detention Alternatives Initiative has proven that the juvenile justice system's dual goals of promoting positive youth development and enhancing public safety are actually not in conflict and can be greatly strengthened by eliminating unnecessary or inappropriate confinement. Our Monroe Circuit Court is a state JDAI site, and they are using 100% of their funding to, to support our youth here in Monroe County.
So this is the acceptance of money, correct?
Correct. Yes, this is the acceptance of $70,000.
I can, I can go ahead and make a motion to approve the JDAI grant renewal in the amount of $70,000.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion on this item? Mr. Cockrell?
I just didn't hear any comment.
Oh. Is there any public comment on this item? I just want to compliment the probation department for once again continuing this work and continuing to get this kind of support for our community. It does make a difference to the youth in our community. So at this point, Mr. Cockrell, would you call the roll on the approval of the JDAI grant in the amount of $70,000?
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3 to 0.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing this to us. We do have another item on the agenda, and so I'd like for us to just take a break at this point, and we'll reconvene here at 11:30. We have Delaware County Sheriff Tony Skinner coming to talk with us about the Integrated Reentry and Correctional Support Program. And so we look forward to hearing about that. It's something that I personally am interested in seeing us put into place here in the county. So we look forward to that. So we'll take a break and be back here 11:30. Thank you. Good morning, everyone. I want to resume this work session of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, and we have one additional item. That is with the Sheriff's Department. And Sheriff Marteau, would you like to kick it off here? And I want to, I brought my notebook so I can take notes with what you're sharing with us.
Good morning, everyone. I emailed the county manager about this morning. The sheriff, Tony Skinner, is the county sheriff. So he will talk about the integration of the correctional support. I know he's officially booked up. I remember from the recent conversation. So the sheriff is kind of up and down the county, and he talked about that. Now I think it would be...
Oh, okay. Oh, that's better. Okay. The reason why I'm very grateful that he came down, because it's about a two-hour drive just one way. So when he's finished here, he's going to go back up, you know, another two-hour drive. So, so what I'm going to do, I'll give the floor to the sheriff, and he'll explain the program here. Sheriff?
Thank you. Good morning. Like Sheriff said, my name is Tony Skinner. I'm the sheriff in Delaware County, Indiana. That's up in Muncie, about 60 miles northeast of Indianapolis. So a little bit about me. I've been in law enforcement for 27 years. That entire 27 years has been, been with the Delaware County Sheriff's Office. I started my career in the jail as a corrections officer, and then moved to the merit side. In my career, I've done just about everything on our department that, that we can do. Delaware County is a, is a county of about 112,000 people. We just built a new jail a little over two years ago. It's actually a full justice center. So our justice center has the sheriff's office in the jail, five circuit courts, the county clerk's office, the prosecutor's office, public defender, adult probation, community corrections, and actually the 4D court. So it's literally everything that's in the criminal justice system is all in one building. And I have to tell you, it's quite wonderful, but, but we've been in that building for a little over two years. That building was built in the early 90s as a middle school, and several years ago, the county commissioners purchased it and then had it repurposed into a justice center. So it wasn't a new construction build, but it was a repurposed. Obviously, the jail part of it is pretty new, just about all of that. But I didn't come here to talk about that today, but I wanted to give you a little bit of background about me and how things work with our sheriff's office. I'm here today to talk about the IRAX program, Integrated Reentry and Correctional Support. So flashback about a year ago, Delaware County became involved in IRAX because we have a doctor, a retired doctor in Delaware County. Her name is Lynn Whitty, and Lynn is very involved in addictions, not so much counseling, but getting people treatment that, that, that need help. And she approached me and said, hey, I've got some guys that want to talk to you about a program. I'd like for you to listen to them. And I said, Dr. Whitty, I appreciate it. I'm not, I, I'm just really not, don't know if I'm interested. She said, please, Tony, talk to these guys, listen to them. So I did. So after talking to Jamie Whitakers, his name, and another guy, I fell in love with the program right from the get-go. So the IRAX program is basically two tiers. The first part of it has, you have to have buy-in from the sheriff because it's treatment that happens inside of the jail. And as you all know, the sheriff's in charge of what programming goes on inside of the jail. So that's where they started. They started with me, with the sheriff. And so, so people who are suffering from alcohol addiction, drug addiction, and even people who are suffering from untreated mental health, they meet with these, they call them peer coaches regularly. Sometimes they meet with them in one-on-one situations, and sometimes they meet with them in group settings. They figure out, you know, what's going on with them, their history, everything that's, that's related to a substance abuse problem. Then they create a, a path forward for these folks, and they continue to meet with them, and they continue to counsel with them. Once they're done in the jail, whether, whether they, they go to court and they get found guilty, and they do time served, whether the charges are dropped, whether they end up going to prison, to the Department of Corrections, eventually, every person in the jail is going to leave the jail by one path or another. The thing that's really great about the IRAX program, and it's what really separates it from every other program that, that you can have in a jail. The sheriff can have the best programming in the jail. They can have top-notch counselors come in. They can get everybody clean. They can make sure that, you know, all the addiction's gone, however you want to word it. They can have people to find God and, and religion in the jails, which I think is wonderful. But historically, what happens is we treat these folks while they're in the jail, and then when they're done being in the jail, when it's time to go back out into the community and be a, you know, a successful citizen, there's no follow-up with them out there. And historically, what happens is people will always resort back to, to what they know. They always go back to selling drugs, or breaking in houses, or getting drunk, and crashing cars, and running from the police. Well, what's different about the IRAX program is they have a team outside of the jail that actually follows these folks for up to 30 days, and it helps them get re, it helps with their reentry back into the community. It helps them find housing. It helps them find employment. We've got a wonderful jobs program in Delaware County called the Jump Program, so we can get them employment. It helps them get insurance, a driver's license. It helps set up appointments with doctors, whether it's a medical doctor, or psychologist, any of these things. It helps them do the things that have to be done, those first, second, and third steps to be successful for their reentry back into the community. Our goal as sheriffs, and, and across the state and across the country, we're, we're all pretty in lockstep with this, that we want to reduce recidivism. When people leave the jail, we don't want them coming back. And so far, it looks like the IRAX program has done a great job in, in helping us do that. I didn't come here today to, to go through this, this manual that the sheriff sent you, page by page. You can do that and look, look at it. I did, I did go through it and take a few highlights, a few things I'd like to talk about. So we instituted the IRAX program in our jail last July. So at the end of last year, we had six months' worth. And in the statewide, there are five counties that were involved in this pilot program, all right? Delaware County and Blackford County are kind of east-central. The other three are in the south. There's Dearborn, Scott, and Davies. There are no counties right now involved in IRAX up in the north, and none on the west side. But in the first six months statewide, they did almost 3,500 surveys. So when an inmate is, comes in the jail, the IRAX team will meet with them, and they'll go through a list of questions. It's almost like a booking procedure, but it's the IRAX people. They're asking them, you know, about their history, about their addiction, you know, if they have any. They've supported over 2,000 of those incarcerated individuals. So more than half of the people surveyed at intake were receiving some sort of treatment. They conducted 13,700 one-on-ones with individuals and over 3,000 group engagements. In those five counties, some courts are actually, actually ordering that IRAX be a part of their sentence. So if a person is sentenced to say six months or nine months in the county jail, the, there are judges in those five counties that are ordering them to participate in the IRAX program. Of all of the people that were surveyed at intake, 773 of them do not participate in the program for safety concerns. This program isn't for everybody. We don't let our most violent offenders participate for obvious reasons, and 293 of them just refused. So, you know, every jail has experienced this, where some people just say, I don't want to, I just want to do my time, and I want to get out of here. So thank you, but no thank you. So it's not for everybody. Some of the benefits that, that the jails are experiencing are reduced critical incidents in the jail. So less overdoses, less, less fighting, anything that a jail would consider a critical incident. It also leads to reduced stress levels for incarcerated individuals, as well as less stress for the correctional staff. It does provide increased resources, insurance, and planning with the participants. And it reduces... I don't want to, I just want to do my time and I want to get out of here. So thank you, but no thank you. So it's not for everybody. Some of the benefits that the jails are experiencing are reduced critical incidents in the jail. So less overdoses, less fighting, anything that a jail would consider a critical incident. It also leads to reduced stress levels for incarcerated individuals as well as less stress for the correctional staff. It does provide increased resources, insurance, and planning with the participants. And it reduces stigma within the jail and within the community. Anybody that follows substance abuse disorder realizes there's a big stigma out there with people who are suffering from that. And a lot of people don't seek the help that they need because they don't want to get labeled as an addict. So programs like this help to reduce that stigma and say, you know what? This is a disease. It's normal. It's in your community. It's in your family. It's in your, it's in, you know, other, your close peers. It's in their families. So if we reduce the stigma, then we can get those people the help that they need. Out of the individuals surveyed, that thirty-five hundred, this report shows that forty-one percent of those could be diagnosed with severe PTSD. Thirty-eight percent of them had mania. Thirty-four percent of them suffered from anxiety. Forty-four percent of them from major depression and forty-seven percent of them from substance use disorder. And I've talked about some of the benefits outside of the jail, help with employment, housing, legal issues, transportation, reducing stigma, mental health, and substance abuse. So at this point, I'll stop and ask you if you have any questions so far about any things I've talked about. Or if you folks back here have any questions, I'd be happy to answer that.
Commissioner Thomas, you're online.
Yes, thank you so much for making the journey to tell us about this. It's really exciting for us especially to hear about because this is something we could do immediately or more immediately than waiting for a new facility. I do have a question about what you've seen inside your county's facility in terms of reducing recidivism. Have you been able to find, anything you can present to us anecdotally or statistically about how this program has changed the recidivism rate in your county?
Sure. So when when the folks from the state, so the IRACs program is funded through money from the state, through state grants. The sheriff asked me a good question this morning. How much money did it cost the county to become a participant in this? And the answer is zero. Everything is funded from the state. The first six-month implementation report didn't didn't give me county by county. There's a couple of pages in here where they refer to county one, county two, county three. They didn't specifically say which counties those are. So I apologize. I can't give you any, you know, analytical data or specific data from our jail. But but I know in the first six months and in the first four months of this year, so now we're ten months into this program, that our jail commander and our jail staff have said that they don't see the frequent flyers as as much as they used to. There's there's a big part at the beginning of that, when we got chosen to participate in the IRACs program, one of the biggest things that I like is collaboration with all of the stakeholders in the county, in the city of Muncie. Everybody has to be on board. So the very first meeting that we had with all of those people, obviously, I was there, our correction, the jail commander was there, the medical team from our jail was there, the county commissioners, the county council, the county attorney, representatives from the city council of Muncie, the mayor, the the city police, every single person, Ball State University there in Delaware County, they had representatives there, Ball Memorial Hospital, IU Ball Hospital, Meridian Health. So every single person that had a seat at the table when it came to recovery or addiction was there. IRACs required buy-in from all of the participants. And fortunately, that's one thing that we had that a lot of the communities that were being considered didn't have. Another thing that, you know, the sheriff, I talked to him about this morning, all of the folks who come into the jail and conduct these counseling and do the do the training and whether it's one-on-one or with the peer groups, you have to understand, all of these folks are in recovery themselves, okay? So what we've learned is that an inmate who is going through addiction will talk to a person who has been through addiction, who has been through that, who has hit rock bottom much more openly than they will a psychologist or correctional officer or a doctor. And that's why IRACs chose to use people who are in recovery themselves. So so everybody coming into our jail has a criminal history, every single, I take that back, almost every single one of them. Because that, you know, they've all been addicted and they've all fought that battle. And fortunately for them, they've won that battle. And now they're giving back and trying to make other people get better themselves. So to answer your question, I don't I don't have the the specific data that you requested. I know from our correctional staff that it's working because they say it's working. Yeah.
I think when I was up at, in Indianapolis, as Sheriff Marte referred to a couple of weeks ago, they indicated that they felt like they had a seventy-five percent success rate for that first thirty days that people are out. And that from what I've read, those first thirty days are critical in terms of finding housing, finding employment, finding transportation, all the things that you're talking about with that the program is doing for folks.
And think what it's like for those inmates who are being released that don't have that support, that don't have a, that don't have a family unit, that don't have a job, they don't have anything. They don't have any help. So and like I said, that's one thing that separates IRACs from all of the other programs that I've ever seen. It's not necessarily what we're doing inside the jail. It's really good, but it's what we're doing, what's what they're doing outside of the jail. But like I said, you have to have the buy-in from the probation office, from your community corrections. You have to have that buy-in from all of the stakeholders. Otherwise, you're talking about a three-legged stool and it's gonna collapse.
Could you tell us what, I'm sorry, didn't mean to interrupt. Can you tell us what the population is in your jail?
Our jail, it's about three hundred and twenty. We fluctuate from like two ninety to three thirty just depending on, you know, certain circumstances. I think today it's around three twenty-five or so, three twenty, three twenty-five.
Did you have a question? Sorry.
Have there, can you identify any particular stumbling blocks that had to be worked out to make this work?
Yeah, that's a good question. Because because every county that's been involved in this, in the pilot program, we've all had issues. Some worse than others, but some of the things that we've experienced, some of the things that the IRACs administrators experienced was it took them a long time to hire enough people to to fill these support roles outside of the jail. So, you know, they they have to figure out, first of all, who's qualified for those positions and they have to be vetted. They have to be, you know, make sure that they're clean. So it took a while to fill all of those roles. Some of the other issues that we had when the program first started were that when the peer coaches were coming inside of the jail, they were bringing some things in the jail that they probably shouldn't have. Nothing, nothing like guns or weapons, but they they might have brought snacks, bubble gum, ink pens, things like that, that we don't allow our, you know, our counselors from the outside to bring in. So there was a learning curve for those folks to understand what they're allowed to do and what they aren't allowed to do. Those were minor stumbling blocks and we fixed them, you know, relatively quickly once we became aware of them. But just know that there are gonna be hurdles if this program is ever implemented here. One thing the sheriff and I were talking about this morning was the number of programs that they already have in the jail. So, you know, they they have narcotics addictions, you know, counseling and alcohol and maybe some mental health treatment. I don't know what's here in the jail. Programs like these and like the ones that they already have are very intense on labor in the jail. So if if the sheriff decided to participate in the IRACs program, there's a chance that it would overlap or it would duplicate some of the programs that he already has in his jail. And at that point, that needs to be figured out upfront. Okay, is IRACs, is IRACs good for our jail? Well, we know it's a good program, but but if we bring it in, you know, there's a chance he's gonna have to make some tough decisions, possibly cut some of the programming that already exists. Not because they're not good, but because this does something different that those might not do. There again, that's his decision. And he's got, he's got, you know, some some tough work ahead of him to figure out if if this, you know, program is right for for the jail and for the citizens and, you know, of the of the county.
So we are, as the sheriff, I probably has told you, we are very space constrained in our current facility. What kind of space do you allocate for this kind of work?
Sure. So that's a good question. In our jail, we have two separate housing units where we hold inmates. Both of those housing units have a classroom attached in close proximity. So for the group settings, they utilize those classrooms. I know that that your your jail here, you know, because of all the programming they do, those programs have to take place somewhere. So so I don't think it's a matter of having the space because it's already there, you know, whether it's a classroom or an empty cell block or something, wherever they can meet. It boils down to honestly to manpower, you know. First of all, is there time enough in the day to fit another program in? And then secondly, if there's time enough in the day, if we have a slot from, you know, say noon to four or whatever, do we have the correctional staff that's not already busy shuffling inmates to court or taking them to GED or taking them to a church service or feeding them meals or dealing with fights and bookends and all the things that corrections officers already do? But do we have enough correctional staff to now add on the task of transporting these people to a classroom? I will tell you that our IRACs folks are in our jails from about eight-thirty in the morning to about three-thirty or four o'clock in the afternoon, Monday through Friday. They're there basically business hours during the day. They don't do anything during lunch. But but there is a constant shuffling of inmates. So it is very labor-intensive. And those are really good questions.
We charge for asking extra questions. What is it, Ms. Purdy? Sorry.
Yeah, I'm just curious. How does the IRACs meld with like a pre-trial release program? Because I understand that some people can, on the pre-trial release, they might actually need and benefit from a, from hearing from the IRACs program, but they might be released without.
So another good question. So IRACs deals with everybody who's in the jail, everybody who gets booked in the jail. So if somebody gets booked in on Friday, they're gonna meet with them the next week. If somebody gets booked in the jail, if if it's working properly, if somebody gets booked in the jail on Saturday and they bond out on Sunday, it's my understanding that IRACs actually reaches out to those folks and to see if there's something that they're doing that can help this person. A lot of times they're not. If a person has the means to bond out that quickly or the charge is that minor, you know, things may, there's there's things in this program that might not fit them. But when done properly, it's my understanding that they reach out to every single person that's booked in the jail. As far as the pre-sentencing or the pre-release, it doesn't matter where you're at in the program. If you've only been in jail for a week and you've signed up to receive these services, then once you get released, they're still gonna hand you off at the door to the probation department, the community corrections, whoever. If you're released on your own, they're still gonna follow you out into the community. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So we have also a question online from county council member Marty Hawk. So Marty, would you like to go ahead and present what you have to say?
Yes. Can you tell me what numbers that you had to increase for your jail staff? You know, our job is to just follow the money and try to figure out how to come up with the money. So even though IRAC covers the program, the county would need to make sure that we understood we're going to need more staff. And seems to me if this really is going to work the way we would hope it would, that there wouldn't be this quick in and out. Those folks who could receive the benefit of some of this counseling might do better than to be just shoved right back out the door again. We see that over and over again. I follow the bookings and it's over and over, the same people, in and out, in and out.
That doesn't just happen in your county. That happens in every county. But there again, that's a good question. So when I got elected sheriff in November of twenty eighteen, so I'm now five months into my second term, I became really hardened to people that approached me about bringing programs in the jail. So pre-COVID, we had, we had church service, we had Narcotics Anonymous, Alcoholics Anonymous, and a few other things. We only had about four or five programs inside of our jail pre-COVID. Once COVID hit, we stopped all programming for about a two-year period. Recently, we have reintroduced church services and our our medical team does some services, but but I don't, that's not an outside service because our medical team is already inside the jail. So now we do church service and we do IRACs. And that's really the only two programs that we do. I don't, I'm very, very stingy about who I let in my jail. So because of the fact that we have a very limited number of of programs in our jail, we didn't have to hire anybody, any additional staff. In talking to your sheriff, they have about eleven different programs currently going on in the jail right now. That's a lot. Those guys are doing a lot of work to help these inmates get better or to get more educated or to become productive citizens. That's a lot. I don't know that adding the IRACs program into a jail that is already busting at the seam with programs and and has maximized the capacity of their correctional officers that you could get by with what I got by. I don't know. You'd have to have a, you'd have to figure that out on your own. But I was fortunate because I had a very, very low number of programs in my jail when we started this program. So it's different from county to county, I guess is what I'm saying.
And I believe I read in the report that it's the IRACs group who will vet the peer groups and will they vet the provider of the treatment, if you will, inside the facility as well as outside? How does that?
They do all of that work. They do all of the vetting. They're quite clear with me when they came into our jail. Even though they vetted them themselves, if if one of their peer coaches or or somebody on their staff, if we have a problem with them, then then we can get them out of our jail simply at a request. Now, that doesn't mean they'll fire. That that means that they might take them from being a peer coach inside the jail to another position outside of the jail. But they do, they do all of that vetting. We still do background checks on all of them. We still like to know who's in our jail doing the program. So, you know, like I said, you gotta understand, some of these folks have lengthy criminal criminal histories. They do. But the fact is, they fought those demons and they've won that fight and and that they're now in recovery. And I can't be more proud of them for the work they're doing now, considering their their history. Yeah.
I think it's a, I just think it's a nice component that the IRACs is actually doing the vetting of the people who are involved, which to me is a nice, takes the political side of it away, it seems like.
Sure. I don't know any other big issue things about the program that I that I haven't covered. If there is, you'll have to forgive me. Like I said, I went through the report and I hit the the things that I thought were important that you needed to know, why it's good for the community and why it's good for the inmates as well as the staff. I thought that, I really thought that our staff would, I'd get some push. I thought that, I, I really thought that our staff would, I'd get some pushback from them. But so far as I've heard, you know, it, it does create more work, obviously for your correctional staff, but I, I really haven't got pushback from them about it. So I was happy about that.
I, I have a question.
Sure.
You said that the, that they are monitored or whatever the correct word is for 30 days once they get out.
Right.
How was, was that 30 days something that you guys, that, that you locally decided? Or was that just part of the, the program as it was?
That's part of the program. That's something that, that the, the IRAX folks, when they first came up with this program, they decided that they were gonna follow them for 30 days. Now, some of these smaller counties, you know, Scott and Dearborn, it's entirely possible that they follow them for longer than that. But 30 days seems to be the appropriate number of days to fulfill the things like housing, jobs, medical, psychological insurance, those important things to really get them rooted.
And I, and I guess you probably, is, I guess my feeling is the program's probably not long enough to know whether that 30 days, if it was 60, whether there'd be any incremental improvement or not.
No, I, that's, that's a legitimate question and I, and I don't, I can't answer that. You know, that's something that, that the folks at the state level, the state IRAX level who came up with this program, they, you know, they, they'd be able to tell you why they chose 30, but so far as I'm able to tell, it seems to be appropriate. Yeah.
Mr. Thomas, yes?
Yes, I was curious about what roles, I, I, granted, it's important to have buy-in from the whole community, I get that, and that makes a lot of sense. What specific roles do the, do Ball State and the hospital play at this point now that the program is up and running? Do they have a role to play on a day-to-day basis?
So I don't think Ball State University does. Ball State University has, has a lot of programming that I deal with. There's a group called the ACDC, the Addictions Coalition of Delaware County, and, and they're heavily involved in programming in our county. I don't know that they are involved in the IRAX program, but it's entirely possible that they get some say-so in the programming and, and how, how the peer coaches talk and, you know, with the inmates and things that they suggest to them and the, and the pathways that they recommend. As far as the hospital themselves, I think that, that group of IRAX that's outside of the jail utilizes the hospital, utilizes Meridian Health Services in Delaware County for those medical and those psychological issues that need dealt with. So, so I don't think they're, they're boots on the ground as far as doing the counseling. I think they're a provider that we can send those folks to once they get out of jail. I think that's, that's how they're involved. You know, you have hospitals here, you have medical and psychological providers in this county that would also fill those roles. That's, you know, I, I can't say it enough, that's why every single person, every cog in the wheel has to be, has to support this program in order for it to be successful.
I think we'd need to involve Health Net here locally also because of the work that they're doing to, to community clinic. We have people from our health department here also who've been following both that, well, one of them is the one that, that told me about IRAX in fact. And so I wonder if any of, if our folks here have any questions or concerns.
You're on the.
Why don't you come on up to the microphone if you do, Kathy, or Lori or Melanie?
I guess my only question is if you thought how you would fund it after the program's gone?
How would we fund it after the program is gone? We are told that we don't, we, we're told that we, that IRAX people expect this funding to continue from the state level for several years. That's all I know right now. We haven't put in any kind of safeguards to, for perpetual funding because at this point, and maybe it's just wishful thinking, but at this point, we don't see this coming to an end. Actually, we see IRAX expanding this year. And I, and I don't wanna speak for, for Jamie Whitaker or anybody else at the state level. But it's, but it's my understanding, it's my opinion that I think that this program is gonna continue to grow. The success that they've seen in the five pilot programs is enough for the folks at the state level that write the checks to not only sustain where we're at with us five, but continue to grow county after county and year after year.
It's my understanding that they would like to see this in place in all 92 counties within Indiana.
That doesn't surprise me to hear you say that. You're probably more connected at the state level than I am, I, I don't know. But, but the people, but from what I've heard, I, I think that there's probably a lot of truth to what you just said. Yeah.
So you've said that, that you were successful in bringing together all kinds of partners within your community. Do you have recommendations for us about how we move that forward? Because I would love to work with the sheriff and others here to put this in place.
So when that happened with us, I was told, hey, March ninth, seven, you know, nine o'clock in the morning, be at this spot. Some, somebody else did all that for me. So I can't tell you who that was. I think it was Jamie and his team. I think they literally did all of the, all of the legwork. And maybe they did that because it was a pilot program. Maybe things would be different for the second or the third or the fourth go-round and that you guys would have a little bit more buy-in as far as setting up those meetings. But, but for us last year, all of that was done for me.
I know in talking with Mr. Whitaker that he indicated that we have to have sort of some kind of recovery support things already in place here. He called them ROC. I forget what that acronym stands for, but I don't, I didn't know if you already had, what you already had in place in Delaware County.
Yeah, I don't remember what ROC stands for either. I, I think with a county this size, you probably have a lot of those things in place, whether you can identify them today or not. But for us, like I said, we were just fortunate that everybody was, it's, it's as important or more important that everybody supports this. It, it was for us when we went through it. Your adult probation program is, is so involved in IRAX when people first get out of jail. And so is the community corrections that besides the sheriff and the, and the judges and the prosecutor, your, your adult probation and your community corrections people also have an integral part of this program. So I don't know, I could probably take 10 minutes and find out what ROC is, but I don't remember what that means.
I probably have it written down at home, yes. Yeah. But it's interesting to hear that the adult probation and community corrections are both really integral to what happens.
They have to. They're, they're extremely involved.
Like I said, I'm taking notes.
Sure.
I'm not ignoring anything that's being said here. How do we start Sheriff Marte? Or Kyle, you know, Commander Gibbons? I mean, I was just.
Well, I, I'd like to invite Kyle to come up here and just tell you the programs that we have now. As I'm sitting there and I'm processing everything in my head, I'm thinking, there are gonna be programs that are gonna overlap. I could just see it. And then if we decide to go forward with this, I need to sit down with my staff and decide how are we gonna go forward because it's gonna put on two minutes amount of strain on the staff already strained. So Kyle, and we've been working on new programs as well as we stand here today.
Right. Right. But I know that you're, you're doing a lot of cleaning and, and within the jail. And so it was interesting also to hear Sheriff Skinner say that, that they're using some of their actual inmate space to do some of these things at times.
Yeah, so we, we talked a little bit about space and how his facility utilizes that. We don't exactly have that option at this very moment. It's something we could look into because we also like this program. It's something we're obviously doing our due diligence. We brought Sheriff Skinner in for a reason. Because really what we're trying to do is set that foundation when people come out, just like we've all talked about, just like every sheriff's department's trying to do, cut down recidivism. That's putting people in a position to be successful. So that's really what we're trying to do. As of now, we got GED and ServSafe like we talked about. We're trying to bring in OSHA, Windows Program Soft Skills, CLA, CLT training, which is like a logistics-type training. So we're trying to get people certified to step right into positions. And that, as you guys know, certifications are very valuable in the workplace. We've got Centerstone, which we all know what that's about. We've got New Life New Leaf, Jumble, AA, Middleway, Creative Writing, Library, Purdue Extension, which is doing a lot of life skills type stuff. We have Read Me programs. We've got currently 11 programs. And if we start adding those, those three that we talked about, we're gonna put this up to 14, no matter what. If we wanna bring in this program, we're gonna have to cut down on programs, at least in the interim, because of the space that we have. We utilize one space for all programs. We even move into the indoor recreation area to conduct programs. There are certain programs where we're, where we need to have them, like church and religious services like that. And so really what we wanna do is optimize space, but also optimize opportunity, which I think this program brings to the table. It's just gonna take some, some working with all parties involved if we're gonna make that happen. You said, how many people did you have inmates-wise? So right as of this moment, he has 325. As of this moment, we have 194. In the past 48 hours, we've had 14 bookends and 20 releases. So we move people very quickly, as you guys know. And that's correct to the programs we already have established. So if this is something that we're truly gonna do, it starts with the sheriff, but it, it includes everyone at every level and it takes very, very close communication.
With that, with that being said, that's gonna be a major undertaking, but you're gonna have to have everyone at the table and have this long discussion, how we would proceed. And as the sheriff mentioned, that's a lot of people we have to get involved. Doesn't mean we can't do it. I'm just saying that we gotta think long-term, how do we get started based on what we have now? So, yeah.
For me too, this also speaks to the kinds of programming that we would want in a new facility and the kind of space that, that we've talked about, that I think we're all on the same page with all that.
Yes, we are. Yeah.
Definitely. Yes. Ms. Purdy, did you have something else?
Just that our, our handy-dandy office manager shared with me a link in the ROC is Recovery Oriented Community.
Yeah, I couldn't hear that, I'm sorry.
She, the ROC is a recovery-oriented community.
Very good.
I just wanted to share that.
That's what I was thinking, I just wanted to say that.
I, I think that, that we definitely, with all the things that we are already doing in our community, we have some of that in place already, whether it's the Stride Center where it's the, there's the Monroe County Substance Use Disorder Awareness Commission. We, yeah.
Centerstone?
Yes, 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 yes.
But I do like the idea that somebody else outside actually is vetting these entities to what's best for you and your facility.
But when, when the Substance Use Disorder Awareness Commission went on a tour of the jail recently, one of the individuals that was with us is formerly incarcerated, somebody that's in recovery. And when that person heard about this, the person said, oh my gosh. He was, he was like ready to sign on. Absolutely. Because he said, if I had had somebody like that to talk to me when I was incarcerated, it might have made all the difference. That it's the trust that you're talking about, you've walked in, you know, I've walked in your shoes kind of thing. It apparently does make a huge difference. And Jamie Whitaker is just such, such a salesperson for this program. Yes, I, I see again that we have another question from county council member Marty Hawk. So Marty?
Yes, as those of you know, it seems that in Monroe County, we talk things to death before we can get anything moving forward. And so I, I'm wondering, how long did it take when you first started trying to put this together before you got everyone's buy-in? I mean, was that months and months, couple of years?
No, it was, it was actually, it all happened fairly quickly. From the first conversation that I had with Jamie about the program, we were, we were on a Zoom call for about an hour. And then from that conversation to that first organizational meeting with the entire community buying all those folks that I talked about, I'm guessing that that happened within, within about two to three months, within about 90 days. So it happened rather quickly. From that meeting to full implementation in our jail was probably about another, I'm just guessing here, probably another three to four months. We were the, we were the fifth county out of the five pilot programs to get going. Delaware County is by far the largest of those. So it was really important for me that we succeed because we had a lot of, you know, we had, I felt like a lot of internal pressure to make it work because, you know, we were the largest. But from first conversation to, to implementation was six, seven months. And, and like I said, it, it goes fast. It does.
Well, that's awesome. And I would expect that our sheriff would be taking a major lead on this since all of this would be happening within his jail. So I appreciate everything that, that you folks are doing and the programs that are in place now. It's gonna be a tough decision about how to use the space, but I look forward to seeing the outcome.
I, I would agree with that. And, and I agree that the sheriff does have some tough decisions. And I would just ask that the county council and the county commissioners fully support him in those decisions because he knows his jail better than anybody else in this county government. So it's, it's important that you recognize that and I appreciate you for asking that.
Is there anything else anyone has in the way of questions or anything that you want to, else you wanna add? I'm ready to start, you know?
Well, that's the way I felt after my first conversation with Jamie. So I'm glad that you have his contact information already. I'll, I don't know if the sheriff has it or not, but okay. Well, that helps.
I actually got to meet with Jamie.
I'll give it to you before we leave.
I met with Jamie very briefly when I was up in Indianapolis a few weeks ago. So yes, he's, he's ready to, I think, help us.
And something else to keep in mind that, that even if Monroe County isn't selected for this next round of, of counties to participate, you know, there's gonna be another round. So, you know, it may take one county a lot longer or a lot shorter of a period of time than it is another. So, you know, that's important to keep in mind too, that, that the second go-round isn't the last one that we hope. Hopefully there's a third go-round. And each time they're gobbling up more counties to participate, so, you know.
Well, what Mr. Whitaker told me a few weeks ago was that right now they have 34 counties on their list that would like to be considered for the few that they're gonna start in July and then another handful that they're looking to start in January.
Yep.
So it's gonna be competitive.
It is gonna be competitive, right?
Yeah.
Well, I wish you the best of luck and I appreciate you inviting me down and, and listening to my story. It's important to me and I, obviously I can tell in my conversations that it's important to you guys too. So thank you.
We're very grateful for your, for your time and the fact that you would come down and chat, chat with us today.
Well, thank you.
Sheriff Marte, thank you for putting this together.
Oh, absolutely. We are, we'll definitely get together again and then have a lengthy conversation, what's the next step here? I like the program. It's just a matter of now having all the tools and everything in place to, to make it happen. So on top of what we're doing now, that's the key issue.
Yeah, well, I, I think we've got a recovery-oriented community in place to get this supported. I would love to see us have this up and running in January if we can put all the pieces together.
Will do.
Thank you so much.
Have a good day.
This meeting is now adjourned and we will not be back next week again. We will resume, well, we'll have our next work session possibly on June the 14th. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Katz. Thank you, Katz.[1732.28]